I'm gonna get Jeff on mute here and then. Alright, I think we are good whenever you are ready.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the Horace City Council meeting from Monday, November 4th to order. Welcome, everyone. We can go ahead and declare a quorum. We have Jeff online and Stephanie is out ill tonight. With that, we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'll need a motion to approve the regular agenda, provided that there aren't any changes, Brenton?
Nope, no changes.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the regular agenda for tonight.
I'll second.
We have two seconds.
Can Jeff second?
Uh, Rachel can. Jeff, you can vote, you're still the mayor.
Rachel, go ahead and second.
I second that.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, provided that there are no changes. I had no issue with anything that I saw on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Alright, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. We'll move on to item five. Approve the city council's special meeting minutes from October 21st. Did everyone have a chance to review those?
We did. Yep.
Yep, okay. Looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion, please. I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Then we'll move right into public comment. Item six. Is there any public comment today? Hearing done. We'll close public comment and move right into item number seven. Sheriff's update. I don't see the sheriffs here tonight. So we'll go ahead and move that to the next meeting. And we'll move right into item number eight, proclamation. November is Diabetes Awareness Month. Brenton?
Bring it up here. Basically, we had a request here from resident here in town regards to having a proclamation for Horace in regards to Diabetes Awareness Month being the month of November. My understanding is last week, Governor Burgum used this basically exact same declaration. If you'd like me to read it off there, it'll take a few minutes, but I could read it off here, see where. Proclamation to Diabetes Awareness Month, November 2024. Whereas diabetes is growing at an epidemic rate globally, it is a serious and costly disease and is the eighth leading cause of death by disease in the United States. And whereas diabetes affects 38.4 million people in the United States and additional 97.6 million adults are affected by prediabetes, a condition which puts them at greater risk for developing type 2 diabetes. And whereas in North Dakota approximately 51,000 adults have diagnosed diabetes and now there are 15,000 people do not know they have diabetes. And individuals with diabetes will experience 2.3 times greater healthcare costs than diagnosed diabetes costs at, costs an estimated 616 million in North Dakota each year. And whereas type 1 diabetes is an autoimmune disease in which a person's pancreas stops producing insulin, a hormone that enables an individual's body to use energy from food. Scientists believe that both genetic factors and environmental triggers are involved and there is no known prevention or cure. And whereas type 1 diabetes is found in both children and adults at age and causes dependence on injected or pumped insulin for life, carrying the constant threat of devastating complications and bringing financial and emotional burden to individuals and their caregivers. And whereas approximately 64,000 people are diagnosed with type 1 diabetes each year, the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention reports a steady increase in prevalence of type 1 diabetes since 2001, most significantly a 30% rise in diagnosis rates from 2018 to 2020. And whereas accessibility and affordability of diabetes-related prescriptions, diabetes care, and diabetes management devices can significantly improve the ability of people with diabetes to effectively manage the disease before suffering devastating complications. Currently, less than one-third of people with type 1 diabetes are achieving target blood glucose control levels. And whereas all citizens are encouraged to help fight the diabetes epidemic by increasing awareness of symptoms and risk factors for diabetes and by understanding type 1 diabetes is not caused by diet or exercise and cannot be cured and by providing support to all those suffering from type, from diabetes. Now, therefore, as mayor of Horace, North Dakota, this will be Mayor Trudeau. He does proclaim November 2024 Diabetes Awareness Month in the city of Horace, North Dakota. Jeff, I knocked out the reading for you there, so he would sign it when he is back. But it would be a proclamation for the city on that. So, like I said, Governor Burgum.
I appreciate that.
Yep, Governor Burgum signed, or signed the proclamation, the exact same one there. Last week, I believe it was, so early last week. And I've been asking that all the cities around would do the same, so.
I feel very strongly about this cause as the deputy mayor here. And obviously, helping out in Jeff's absence, this is a terrible disease that takes a lot of time, a lot of resources, and a lot of emotion from people. I personally lost an aunt to type 1 diabetes at the age of 40 and I have several other family members that are afflicted. So this is a big deal and I was really excited to see this on the agenda. So I appreciate those of you that came to make sure that we acknowledge this disease and continue to search for cures and/or relief for those suffering and afflicted.
I just want to say I agree. My husband actually is, he suffers from type 1 diabetes as well. And Denell, you have been instrumental for my family and I just want you to know that. And any residents that are listening or watching later online, I just, can you just tell us what the actual, where they can find your website or your Facebook page to join? Can you tell us that?
Yes, absolutely. Type 1 Diabetes Families.
Come on up, Denell. At the, please sit at the microphone. I think this is an important cause. I want everyone to hear.
The website I manage with another, two other moms is Type 1 Diabetes Families Connect, N-D-M-N in South Dakota. So it's our three states. Just trying to create a more cohesive environment for people to get to know each other and help each other here because the big national websites, or not websites, Facebook pages, you get lost in all the comments and there's some really awful people that comment, as we all know on social media, but honestly, we help save people's lives here. And I cannot tell you how many days I meet people and my husband says, oh my gosh, you made another person cry. And it's because they're finally finding help and they're finding support. So I appreciate this so much. I have actually requested this proclamation from the state of North Dakota since 2016. And I'm frustrated that people don't know that it's Diabetes Awareness Month in November. My daughter, who has type 1 diabetes, is Horace High School freshman volleyball coach and she has two type 1 diabetics on her team. And those girls, every year, go and do Dig the Cure nights for volleyball in October for breast cancer awareness, which is extremely important. And I have a sister-in-law fighting it right now. We're not saying, don't do that, but we're saying, what about us too? She's there wearing her pink t-shirt and she's alarming low on my watch and I'm sitting in the stands wanting to cry because people don't understand how difficult this disease is. And we're only nine years in. And it's extremely financially frustrating, devastating, emotionally devastating, and physically, every single day devastating. And she's 22 now. And I still monitor on my, on my watch and I want to help everyone. Everyone know, employers know, understand, because it's invisible. You don't understand. They're breathing, but they're not providing you what they could be potentially for your businesses because they're barely surviving and we need help.
Yeah, so I would like to, like, the residents of Horace, just so that everybody is aware, they absolutely have resources. Denell has been great. She lives right here in Horace and has the Facebook page, the website, and she will help you. I've been there.
You also have a WAC coming up, if I'm not mistaken?
Yep, we, we started creating our teams right now. Our WAC is in May now because that's when our chapter office in the city does theirs and it makes it easier for me to coordinate if we're doing things at the same time. But our WAC is May 17th. And we have one every year here in Fargo.
My daughter and her friends participate every year. We're looking forward to seeing you there.
Yeah. And I show up at all kinds of people's houses like, hi, I'm the diabetes advocate. And yes, it's so important. So if anyone has any questions, send them to me. You got, I mean, Sarah and Naomi have been super supportive and obviously I've known Rachel's family for a long time, talked to your mom just about it in church last week. So, so many people have this disease and so many people don't know how to help.
God bless you, Denell. We are, we are truly honored to have you as a part of our community.
Thank you. I wish I got paid by the word.
Right? Wonderful. I think that's an excellent cause. Alright, I, I hope we've given the appropriate amount of time and effort into our cause. We'll put, moving to number nine, the saltwater addition. Jase, please.
Council members, Mr. Mayor Trudeau. The application before you tonight is for a plat only. The applicant's proposing to subdivide approximately 3.55 acres, which is an existing lot in the Vistos Industrial Edition into five total lots. The property is currently zoned I-1, which is light industrial, with no request to rezone the property. Just in talking with applicants, it's my understanding that the applicant has three businesses lined up to occupy three of the five sites within this replat with two of the lots available for future development. In your packet, you'll notice something new that we're starting to add is a memo that's coming from Interstate Engineering regarding infrastructure improvements or requirements or locations for these plat processes that come through. This one was relatively clean in terms of existing infrastructure to that site. Planning and zoning commission reviewed this project on October 8th, 2024 and ultimately voted 6-0 to recommend approval with the following conditions of approval, which are the plat language shall be amended to remove the conveyance of the private access utilities meant to the public before the recordation of the plat. Fire hydrant location shall be approved in writing by Southern Valley Fire and Rescue. And then the applicant shall comply with civil plan and construction requirements detailed within the city engineer's memo, which is dated 9/23/24. With that, I'll stand for any questions you guys may have. The applicants and the representatives are here tonight as well. And just in mind that this is a public hearing, so whenever you are ready, you can open that up.
Yep, I will. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing right away and see if there's any comments on the proposed plat amendment. Do we have any questions?
I do not have any questions on this, except other than, what businesses are coming to town? That's exciting.
There's a cabinet shop.
My wife and I own multiple businesses. There won't be childcare there, but we own childcare. So it's just our offices run our business. E-commerce, so all margin Amazon platforms and real estate land developer. And the third partner can't be here tonight because he is very busy this time of year is Christmas decor for back there at the church. So he's busy in the Christmas lights.
Very cool. I don't have additional questions. I've had an opportunity to go through the packet. We have 47 pages of a packet, which is a lot. I do want to encourage taking a look at the map. I'm not sure if you've all seen it on page 32. Go ahead and scroll up. There is a map with Ubetcha Drive directly in the proximity and it shows the proposed subdivision of the plat, which looks very reasonable for what's being shown here. Any additional comments on the public hearing? If none, I will close the public hearing. And we'll be looking for a motion to accept the saltwater addition proposed changes with the stipulations as recommended by planning and zoning. Can I get a second?
Yep, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Motion passes. Congratulations and welcome. Looking forward to these changes in our community. Excellent. With that, we'll move on to the 2023 audit. Brenton?
For this item here, we have 2023 audit. Ida Bailey, we have John Higgin and Mason from Ida Bailey here. John will provide a overview of the 2023 audit. Any questions you may have regarding that? You may remember John earlier this year. It was back in February, earlier this year. He was here presenting the 2022 audit. So we were able to streamline this and iron it out quicker this year, which is great. We were able to get calendars aligned. But John will run through the audit and see what any questions you have, so.
Welcome, John.
Alrighty, well, thank you guys for having me. Like Brent mentioned, it doesn't seem like it was that far or that long ago that I was here for 2022. So as he mentioned, we, we did streamline a little bit, a little bit more timely reporting and we're going to continue to work together to get as timely as possible in the future as well. So tonight, we will be going over the executive summary for the 1231, 2023 financial statements. We choose to present the executive summary similar to previous years, kind of a condensed version of the financial statements. Those get a little bit more complex each year with new government standards. So the executive summary is kind of a shortened version with comparative information to previous years, just to make things a little bit more user-friendly. So that is our objective tonight. I'll try to keep things relatively short and sweet. But do know that the full financial statements are available as well and those were issued on October 2nd of 2024. So with that, we'll get into the audit results. So the end goal of every single audit is to issue an audit opinion. So what does that mean? Management is responsible for three things, that the financial statements are prepared in the proper accounting principles, which is in layman's terms called GAAP, that there are no material misstatements and that they are presented fairly. So we as auditors, we come out through a series of procedures and tests, issue an audit opinion, which obtains reasonable but not absolute assurance. This year, the city did receive an unmodified audit opinion, which is basically a fancy word for a clean audit opinion, exactly what you're looking for and what the city has received in previous years. So with an audit opinion, we do issue audit findings. Doesn't necessarily impact our overall opinion, but it is something that is important enough to bring to the attention of governance and issued as part of, of the financial statements. There are four findings this year, which are considered to be material weaknesses. First one is segregation of duties. You guys have heard this story before. It is the size of the city. It's not uncommon. Doesn't really benefit you guys from a cost benefit analysis to go out and hire, you know, four or five more individuals in the finance department to properly get enough eyeballs and hands on everything. Doesn't necessarily mean that you guys are doing anything wrong with the bodies that you have there. It just simply means you're not big enough to properly have enough segregation between individuals and, and accounting responsibilities. I'll lump number two and three together, adjusting journal entries, including restatements and the preparation of the financial statements. I mentioned a little bit earlier, those financial statements to get bigger and bigger each year, a little bit more complex with additional accounting standards. So we as auditors are requested by the city to prepare the financial statements to make sure that all the footnotes and everything is completed appropriately in the proper accounting standards. And with that, we propose a handful of adjusting journal entries just to make sure that everything is presented appropriately. Again, similar findings to what you guys, or the exact same finding, I should say, to what you guys have received previously. And I'll lump these first three together, kind of something we would expect for a city of your guys' size going forward as well. The fourth one is, is pretty generic from an account reconciliation differences. Basically meaning because of the number of adjustments and the volume that we had to propose, we do issue a separate finding just because of that volume. Again, similar to what you guys have received in previous years, but out of those four, I would say that one would be the easiest one to clean up and something we can work with Matt and Brent in the future to alleviate, so.
Like, can you give me an example of, like, what a difference?
Yeah, so having underlying accounting records that doesn't necessarily agree to the general ledger. So areas like receivables, payables. The biggest one for you guys is your fixed assets. Just because of the, the volume of your guys' projects and the amount and the dollar amount, there's a lot going on with all your guys' improvement districts. So when we're working through that, we're working with management to identify, you know, oh, we gotta record this, we missed this one, stuff like that. Very normal course of, of an audit process, but because of the amount of differences that we've, that was identified through that audit process, that's where that, that kind of fourth find, finding comes from.
Are any of these irregular?
For a city of your guys' size, no. That fourth one, because you guys are growing so fast, that, that's the biggest kind of reasoning behind that and also the turnover within the finance office over the last handful of years. I know as you guys have more solidified staff there, as Matt sticks around for a little bit longer, hopefully you guys don't have more turnover there. That's where that, that, I can see that one coming off. The first three are going to be very tough based on your guys' office size. Just in, in, put in perspective, the majority of the entities that we audit have these. Until you get to be much bigger offices like your Fargo or maybe even more head, you could potentially start alleviating some of these, but it's not uncommon for us to have a journal entries associated with those audits as well, so.
I do recall that conversation last time.
Yep. And I'd be remiss to say it probably won't, you know, continue to next year as well. So we kind of go into it knowing that those first three are more than likely going to exist. Okay? So with that, we'll get, we'll dive quickly into some of the numbers. First slide here being your cash and investment balances. So this is as of 1231, 2023. But overall, pretty consistent growth over the last five years. There is some slight breakdown there between your business type, which is your water, sewer, and garbage funds, as opposed to your governmental, your general fund, debt service, and other. You'll see the, the main attributed, main attributed, attributed, I don't know how to phrase that, but the main reason for the increase there in 2023 is the additional funds that are coming into debt service to pay off all the additional debt associated with, with your special assessment debts and your improvement districts. So that's going to probably continue to grow as you guys continue to take out debt. Just because the property taxes and special assessments getting collected from that is going to continue to rise to meet the debt service needs, so. Before I move on quickly, if we can move back just slightly, I do want to point out that this does not incorporate capital projects. Just because the dollar amount and the volatility between the capital projects can kind of sway this. We want to keep it as comparable year to year as possible because as you guys issue additional debt, that's just going to keep increasing. So the capital projects, we do leave off of this graph, but the, the dollar amount of that, just for reference purposes, is about 45 million. As opposed to all of the other cash combined throughout the city is just over 20 million, so. Okay, now we can move into the general fund, which is the main operating fund for the city. Looks like this graph might be a little goofed up on the slide. If you can, you just want to try going back and then coming back into it.
Here, I can pull up your original one that might be a little cleaner.
I think on the, on the handout printed version, everything should be kosher. It does look like it's the right, it's just kind of hard to read.
It's the right numbers, it's just out of alignment.
Yep. So it doesn't look pretty, but the numbers are there. I won't spend too much time on this, just because there's a lot that goes into this, but high level, this is a budget to actual comparison. See if we can, I'll just pause quickly, see if we can get there.
There we go.
There we go. That looks a little bit better. So first column being your final budgeted numbers, second column being your actual, and the third column there being variance. I'll just kind of pick a very high level, a couple items that jump out. From a revenue standpoint, very consistent budget to actual, with the biggest difference there being your miscellaneous. And that is mostly because the miscellaneous bucket for budget purposes did not include the administrative fees that are associated with the permanent bonding for your guys' debt, where we do include that for financial reporting purposes. Expenditures were pretty much even with some differences between buckets, but overall, almost spot on between budgeted and actual. After factoring some transfers ins and outs, which I will say the administrative revenue that we talked about in the miscellaneous line, that does get transferred out. So it's kind of an in and out within the general fund. Puts your ending net change in fund balance for the general fund of a positive 140,000, bringing your ending fund balance to about 2.5 million and change for the general fund. So if you can kind of mentally circle that 2.5 million, that's kind of what we'll go over here in the next couple slides. So what does a positive fund balance do for the city? It does a number of things. First and foremost, or first, it contributes to a favorable bond rating. As you guys know, I know stranger to bond issuances, having additional fund balance can lead to better rates for that bonding. Second, it produces investment income. So having your money work for you in the bank is always a plus. And thirdly, most importantly, it offers a cushion for unexpected expenditures or revenue shortfalls in the future. Think of it kind of like a savings account for everyone's personal. Obviously, you like to have more dollars in there than less, so. This is a more technical slide. There is a breakdown of different categories of, of fund balance. I won't spend too much time. The two applicable areas for the city are the second column there being restricted. These are legally restricted by outside parties for specific purposes. And then the last column is unassigned. Think of this as kind of your rainy day. This is everything else effectively, anything that's not encumbered or designated for any intentional purposes for the city.
Give me an example of a restricted, illegally restricted by outside parties.
Yep. So if you go to the next slide here, that'll kind of visualize that a little bit. So for FY '23, that restricted amount, and FY '22, the amount did not change, 725,000 and that is restricted for park dedication, so money that you guys need to use for park dedications that were received from the city for, from developers. So that's the perfect example for you guys, what's applicable for the city. Other examples might be for future debt restrictions. Sometimes there's capital reserve restrictions associated with some different debt if, if you guys receive different types of debt, but not necessarily uncommon to not have restrictions as well. You can see back in 2020 and 2021, there wasn't any of that park dedication. As you guys spend that park dedication money, that restriction will go away, assuming that additional ones are not received, so. So that is kind of a breakdown of the, the fund balance, that total 1.8 million being in your unassigned. So that we'll kind of talk about here in the next few slides. So where should the city be? That's kind of the million dollar question. Unfortunately, there is no golden answer or magic answer. Every city or local government operates a little bit differently. There is a national association, it's called the GFOA, which suggests having no less than 5 to 15% of annual operating expenditures in that ending fund balance. Some cities do develop policies to say, you know, here's kind of a goal on where we would like to be. Currently, the city does not have a formal policy associated with that, which is not necessarily, you know, no right, wrong, or indifferent, but there isn't anything on paper right now for the city. So where did you guys end up? Better way to look at this, that 1.8 million that sitting is kind of unrestricted or unassigned amount is about 80% of your annual expenditures. So effectively, the city could operate as is with no additional money coming in for about 80% of your annual expenditures. Another way to look at it would be about nine and a half months worth kind of sitting in that unassigned fund balance, so. Like I said, every city operates a little bit differently. Every local government does. I'd say the average that we see kind of in the tri-state area is probably somewhere between that 25 to 50% range. So you guys are above that. But again, no, no right or wrong answer here.
We're trying very hard to put money into reserves and to build our operating capital in the event of, say, another emergency like in 2009 with the flood and whatnot. We, we need that. So I'm seeing a healthy trend.
Yeah, I mean, we worked really hard for the 2025 budget to put extra funds into the reserves accounts so we can try to really beef that up.
Yep. And the other thing too, I'll point out to that effect is the city does transfer money over to capital project reserve accounts as well. So those would be outflows out of the general fund, but those are not sitting in the general fund and reflected in these numbers. So these would be outside of that as well, so. There are some additional reserves sitting in general capital projects funds. There are some additional reserves sitting in general capital projects funds, which I don't have, it's not part of the executive summary, but I think Brent or Matt.
The example of that would be like the admin dollars. So you had to reflect it in the revenue and then expenditure out. But then the expenditure out of the revenue of the admin dollars that we have from assessment districts goes to the pellet facilities fund. So like that's to help us with City Hall or other pellet facilities, so. That would be the main example that we have of that going on, so.
Okay, so that is it for the general fund. Next, we'll kind of cover some of the business type or enterprise funds for the city. First one being the water fund. So this graph shows your annual operating revenues, expenditures, and then the difference between the two being your operating income over the last five years. Usually, most cities try to operate at roughly break even, give or take each year, which is pretty consistent to what we're seeing for for the city. The yellow line there is the top line for operating expenditures, followed by the operating revenue, which did lead to an operating loss in two thousand twenty-three of about one hundred and thirty thousand for the water fund. Again, cities are not in the business of trying to make money. We do want to be, you know, pretty consistent or try to be break even at the rates you're charging customers and or citizens to be enough to operate efficiently and effectively without trying to, you know, make a significant amount of money.
Remind me, Brent, when did we increase the water?
It had been last year, however, what throws this off a little bit, if I remember correctly, is we had the water projects going on, so they reflected there until they could balance out.
Right, because we didn't do it until we were online.
Yeah, well, that.
Like online with the water.
Yeah, for the utility rates, we didn't do that until later in the year. But also the cash flow until we get reimbursed for less or up dollars and so it's a.
So you're not seeing this as like an issue?
No, because this what influence what changed this up a little bit is because of that, those two water projects that are going on, if I remember correctly.
There's a reimbursement fund still coming that is reflected here.
So we cash flow and then the reimbursements, but the reimbursements depending on when those reimbursements occurred can impact that.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
I keep looking.
I can speak to both of that a little bit. So there's a lot that goes on to that, Brent, and I don't want to get too into the weeds of the accounting and the timing of everything associated with those projects. But this is your operational revenues and expenses. Those types of grant proceeds are are received through non-operating revenues, so they're still going and being impacted within the water fund, it's just not in your operational. A lot of times, cities like to look at, how do we operate the personnel, the expenses associated with providing water to the citizens? And what are the receipts or what are the the revenue coming from those customers? That's being reflected on this slide, whereas some of that non-operating stuff, you can have interest revenue, interest expense. But the big one that Brent's referring to is your grant revenue associated with some of that state water commission projects. So that dollar amount, just for for reference purposes, for two thousand twenty-three was about one point one million. So once you start factoring in some of that other stuff, there still is a positive increase to fund balance or net position each year, but from an operational standpoint, there was a loss. Now, to your comment, there was a rate increase in two thousand twenty-three, but that didn't take effect, I believe, until like November.
Correct.
So.
And that was that was intentional, that was delayed intentionally.
So going forward, you've probably already kind of started to recoup some some additional costs.
That's what I that's why I asked the question, because I want to know how we're like sitting. Like, I would foresee we wouldn't need to be increasing water fees, which is.
I don't foresee an increase of that, I know, so.
And it it's important to keep to keep considering and looking at from a rate perspective, but it is sometimes a little bit tough from a comparability standpoint, because there can be annual expenditures that, you know, a bigger repair or maintenance item that occurred in in one year versus another year. You know, stuff can come up, so it you kind of want to look at it from a multi-year position, I guess. And the other thing to factor that does play a factor into this is depreciation. So you guys are continuing to add assets within the water sewer fund through your improvement districts. There are water and sewer portions, so those are those are contributed into these funds. But there is a depreciation impact to that as well. So as you guys continue to accumulate assets in these funds, your depreciation number is going to to increase as well, which is factored in as an operating expense, so.
That's good to know.
It's kind of a paper expense, if you will. Cash doesn't go out the door for it, but it is an an expense through operations, yeah, so. There is a lot going on there, if there's additional questions and stuff or want additional details, just let me know as well.
Well, I think it's important for the residents to know, like Sarah said, we we intentionally waited because we wanted to make sure that we were getting this the the water.
Yeah.
Before we started getting the funds from the residents to pay for it.
The project needed to be completed, so they actually had the service before we were going to bill them for the service, even though we took an increase prior to that time.
Yep.
I just, sorry, I just wanted the.
Nope, that's okay, there is a lot that goes into these slides, so.
A method to the madness.
We just didn't think it would be fair.
Right.
That's right.
To be increasing water fees when they weren't even getting the.
They didn't have a change in the water.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think we're good on water fund, sewer fund should hopefully be a little bit quicker. More or less the same situation from an operating perspective. Very similar operating loss in two thousand twenty-three. Again, roughly a break even over the last five years. I do not believe, Brent, correct me if I'm wrong, there was a a rate increase in sewer.
I think we did that one in twenty-two or the beginning.
Okay.
Around that timeframe, but it's been pretty stable and what you've had is like the overall operating, I'm trying to remember if like tap fees and stuff hit operating or not, but.
Yep, yep, so basically, any charge to customers, collected from customers would be included in operating revenues, but, yep. So more of the story is just continuing to monitor, make sure that rates are appropriate. But again, city's not in the business of trying to make a bunch of money off its citizens either, so. Okay, last enterprise fund for the city, this one's a little bit more simplified, is the garbage fund. You guys contract that out, so basically, the revenue coming in goes to offset to pay for those contracted services. There's no significant assets associated with this fund, so. Overall, very consistent over the last last couple of years, always operating slightly over expenditures, so. That one's pretty straightforward. And then the last slide for tonight is kind of a snapshot for the year-end net position for the all the proprietary funds. There's a small sliver in there for garbage, but as I mentioned, there is not a whole lot of assets associated with it, more of just a timing on a cash collections and receivables standpoint. The other two funds, water and sewer, do have much more significant net position balances, which is largely going to be made up of all of the assets associated with the water and sewer. And as you can see, there is consistent, steady growth there, and that, again, is attributed to the water and sewer portions of all the improvement districts that are being completed. Those portions do get recognized as assets within those funds, so that's where the the growth there is over the last five years and where we can we'd expect to see continue as well, so. With that, that kind of ends my little spiel for the night. Before I go, any questions? I know that we kind of talked through a couple of the slides and stuff as we went, but I threw a lot at you, anything that you guys have from an auditor or financial perspective?
I don't have anything at this time. I did go through the files that were presented. I had a couple of questions as far as what was included, if there was depreciation, if there was capital expenditures, those questions got answered in your presentation, so I don't have anything additional.
No, I don't either, you answered all my questions too.
Yep, I agree, I don't have any additional questions for you.
Perfect, well, thank you again for having me. Before I go to, I want to give a quick shout out to Brent and Matt, who's not here. Just appreciate working with those guys, they're always easy to work with. We're working to get a little bit more timely reporting for you guys, so we'll continue to work that going forward. But appreciate all the help from the finance team. They make make our lives pretty easy to work with, so appreciate that.
Please continue to give feedback on what we can do to minimize the amount of journal and ledger adjustments.
Yep.
I read through all the documentation, there's some pretty extensive things in the packet that weren't obviously presented here, but for background information. I think that's an opportunity for some improvement. I realize we can't bulk up and add five or ten more staff for all the, you know, different entities that we need to report on, however, that is something that I think we can make some improvement on. So any guidance that you could provide as we work toward that, I see some opportunity there.
Yep, you bet, and I know Brent and Matt are not strangers to reaching out with questions and stuff throughout the year as well, so that helps.
I can say one thing I've noticed is, keep in mind too, is that I would say it was about four or five years ago, we we went to Blackmole.
A different software.
Software, so we still have things that have kind of been shifting of, okay, we have this line item or that, and even those, I know that's just a simple example, but even those impacted.
It's a transition.
Yeah, it'll it'll even out a little bit over time, I think, also as we have items kind of set more in stone.
Yeah, we did, we did expand our breakdowns and our categorization, I recall, as well, and that was easily within the last five years, so.
So those stuff that comes with time, I'm not saying that's the only thing. You know, there's some things where it get less than one year and then once the interview going, wait, Matt, it should be over here, and that's an adjustment like what John's referring to also, so.
I know it's quite an exercise, we appreciate the assistance of Ida Bailey with us to help keep on top of our financial reporting. It's extremely extremely important as we grow.
Absolutely.
To stay on top of it, thank you, John.
Well, thank you guys for having me, have a good rest of your night.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll move on to item number eleven. This is in regards to Lost River first to fourth additions, the letter of credit requirement. Brenton?
What this comes from is the developer for Lost River asked if the layer credit can be dropped for Lost River first through fourth additions. That development or developers agreement has been around for quite a while, I want to say around twenty sixteen, seventeen ballpark. However, in the letter or in the developer agreements in that one, it didn't have a sunset of where the layer credit drops off. So it implies that layer credit is required until all the lots are sold and built upon. There are two lots remaining out of approximately a hundred and fifty lots or so. Only two lots remaining at this time.
In all additions?
First through fourth.
Okay.
That have not been permitted and be built upon or built upon.
Two lots.
So there's two lots, and anyways, how we do developer agreements now, and actually not long after this, was we included a sunset clause, so we'll say, okay, the layer credit requirement drops at either ninety percent or eighty-five percent built out. And we've been doing that for, what, probably about four or five years, in the ball, you know, ballpark around there. Understanding that it does take time for lots to be or a development to be completely built out. Or do they ever, you know, an individual may own a lot and be saying on it and they want to just keep that as extra space. And that's just example what you could run across. So anyways, the developer asked if this layer credit can be dropped. As of right now, if it was to be maintained, the cost, the layer credit or secured amount would be just over thirty-one thousand dollars. Honestly, from working with different layer credits throughout the city here, that's a pretty small one, because it's only for special assessments for two lots, and half of that cost, so. Overall, I believe the city's risk tied to this development is not really much there anymore because of spread out funds. Many homeowners or property owners isn't just one person, and that's one of the reasons why we have layer credit in the first place. So when a developer reaches that threshold of the sunset clause, typically, I'm able to say, okay, yep, you've been really done with your layer credit requirement, however, being that there isn't one in here, that would be the council needs to say yes or no.
Yeah, this one, this one's one that was even prior to my time. Lost River first through fourth is obviously well over ninety percent developed and there's no.
It's about ninety-nine percent.
Yeah, ninety-nine percent. There's very little of any risk here at this point in time, especially since they've moved on to the fifth, sixth, seventh, and now moving into Lost River West additions. So I have no heartburn over this.
No, me either.
Lucas, I don't know if Rachel has a conflict on that one.
Counselor, you should recuse yourself.
Yeah, I'll recuse myself from voting on this matter.
Sorry, I didn't touch base at that time.
No, no, it's okay.
This one was pretty.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, well, then I'll just make a motion to.
Accept.
To accept the, you know, to drop the letter of credit of thirty-one.
To release the letter of credit.
Release the letter of credit.
Not drop, release, release the letter of credit. Do I need to say the amount there?
Nope.
Okay, for Lost River's first through fourth addition, please? Sorry, that was.
It's perfect.
It's fine, I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And we'll move on to number twelve, sanitary sewer improvement district two thousand twenty-three dash six. This is the Seventy-Sixth Avenue and Eighty-First Street Sanitary Sewer Force Main. This is just discussion, not action tonight.
Correct, acting mayor. So the city was presented with a petition for improvements requesting this project from the developers of Lost River West and the Jackson Alley areas. That was in October of two thousand twenty-three. That petition was accepted by the city council at that time. There were a lot of moving pieces to this project, there still are some moving pieces to this project, but in order to keep it through the special assessment policy and procedures, we're to the point of the preliminary engineering report and giving an outline of what the project is, what the proposed funding is and that type of stuff, what the project consists of. So I will apologize if you looked at your attachments, there was a conversion error in PDF somehow that created some, I don't know what you want to call them, but I will get those shaped up and shipped out to you probably tomorrow, I'll get that all cleaned up, so I can understand why some of the legends may be a little bit, little bit odd. But anyways, so we have the report before you, it is not been approved. It is coming to you just to make you aware of where the project at, make you aware of what the project is, and make you aware of some of the costs that come with it too. So with the enhanced special assessment policy procedure, there is a public input phase where we are starting, we're getting to that point. So this is kind of a twofold, threefold, however messy you want to believe the project to be, but there is a paving that's going to come with this too of Wall Avenue and Eighty-First Street. So from Buckthorne to Seventy-Sixth Avenue, where we left off on Wall, through Eighty-First Street. So what our plan was is to get this before you, get it out to you guys so you can review it, provide comments on it, some of you have provided comments on that, and then bring at the next city council meeting the report for the paving portion of it, so we can put that together, and when we reach out to the public for input, we can kill two birds with one stone, we can do both of the projects or all three of the projects in in one time for that. So what I'm asking of you guys is to review it and provide any comments that you have. It doesn't have to be tonight, I do have some comments from a couple of you earlier today, so just to kind of keep things moving through, moving through the process, I wanted to get it in front of you and I guess get some comments and get it ready for that public input stage of the process.
Okay, so since I gave, since I asked you my questions, do you want me to fill in the council on my questions, or do you want to give them a rundown of my questions?
I do.
I had it transcribed.
Huh?
I had it transcribed, so I can.
But you could leave out the cuss words, maybe.
I don't think, I don't think that we put any of them in.
Oh, okay.
So I'll paraphrase, Councilor Berklin and I did have some conversations on this earlier today, and there were, I'll just hit the highlights, if I missed something, let me know, I won't, I'm not going to reiterate them. One of the things was just wishing that there were some more answers back in the district was created. And that, I think, is unanimous amongst everybody here. As Jay said earlier, we're now putting a memo in from our office that says this leads to this, leads this, leads to this, identifying where those in public infrastructure are that will this project will be turning into, or those offsite improvements that need to be done at that time. So that is something that we're working on. You had some questions on the planning of our crossing on Wall Avenue and just the timing of it and Lost River West. So the crossing of Wall Avenue was put in with. So the crossing of Wall Avenue was put in with the SSL to Fargo, and that was done in 2016. Planning was started in 16, instruction was done in 17, late 17, when the Lost River addition came online. So just through a little bit of knowledge, the Lost River West area wasn't even annexed into the city until 2022. So there's, there's some there. Let's see here, some issue talks on the cost, something we can certainly get onto. The need for another subdivision for this infrastructure to get into, we'll address that some more. So basically, the Force Main to Fargo where this one would go runs on the east side of County Road 17. It does run through the middle of the round vault roughly. It's actually, actually in the northbound lane is where it tends to run. So we have limited corridor along 76th Avenue. If you'd see, there's quite a bit of information in the appendixes about that corridor because it is kind of a utility highway crossing the river and some of the right of way. I mean, you guys remember the right of way that had to be required for Wall Avenue. This one is a county highway, so there is a little bit more right of way. We just need the blessing to work within that right of way. We do have to have some jurisdictional permitting because we have to cross the Cheyenne River and we have to cross the Cheyenne diversion, which just adds, adds more, more to the project. Our next, we touched a little bit on our next agenda item as far as kind of getting an overall understanding of what the infrastructure of the current plat's in the process, or at least are thinking of as to what needs to be done for all of those. Concerns with capacity to Fargo, I have the latest numbers. I got them today, so I can, we can push on that. Talked about that. A little bit of comment on the project driver as to who's going to be, who's going to be assessed for it. We did put an assessment based on three units per acre in the appendix. And there were areas that are existing like Maple Grove, Shadow Lane, and Dreamfields where they are a large lot, one unit septic tank users. So we left all those as one. That's been typically what the special assessment commission done in the city council has agreed with on those larger lots is to not hit them with more density. That's something that can be changed, probably will be changed. I just, we wanted somewhere to have a basis to start off with that. And then we've had some talk about the potential for some pumps robbing the city of capacity to the Deer Creek, you know, taking up some of the precious capacity that there is with clear water that doesn't need treating. It's, it's just groundwater, so. Those are kind of the high points that we, we had talked about.
Can you, can you touch base on like Rivers Edge, how like, is Rivers Edge connected to the Lost River?
Rivers Edge is, yep.
So that's why I'm confused because I guess maybe I'm not understanding the timeline. But did we approve, did we know that Lost River West was being annexed in before that?
Yeah, Lost River West was in 21, I want to say.
So then why did we end up leaving out?
It started in 21. If you look back.
You know, I just, I guess I don't understand why we would leave Lost River West out of the equation.
I won't say that it was left out of the equation, but at that time, crossing the, so it was a lot of discussion with the city council at the time to extend sewer service over across the river. That was a big deal.
I recall this.
This was a big deal to get it done. And the connection to Fargo had to be made. The connection to Fargo had to be made at the time because there wasn't a lot of capacity in the lagoons. So we did, the city did a lining project in the heart of the city here, which cut down on the II, which cut down on the clear water getting into the system, taking up some of the lagoon space. So in an interim, Lost River was able to go to the lagoons. Obviously now, we just talked about it, it's 99% built out, the first through fourth additions, fifth addition seems to have pretty, pretty good. And the seventh addition is the, is the last one to come along. So that has had to go north because the lagoons can't handle that. So that has to go to Fargo. So I don't want to say that Lost River West wasn't thought about back then. But I don't think it was a real big, big, I don't remember it being a big topic of discussion at that time, you know, crossing the Cheyenne diversion and then knowing that the FM diversion was going to be right out there.
I just, I just have to say, like, it just seems like a very high price tag to be pushing it all the way up and over and.
I realize the developer has some concerns about that cost. I've also spoken to the developer about his concerns. What, what he's failing to see is that the developer for Rivers Edge that tied in will also have his opportunity to pay his fair share down the road. And so there will be a balancing of this coming as those developments come online.
I know, but it's, it's, I, and honestly, I haven't even really truly talked to the developer much about this. But I'm just looking at overall cost of the, I mean, we talk so much about being affordable and special assessments, and now we're going to try to run a line all the way up and over. Is there any other option or are we just really like, this is it? I mean, or was this like the plan so that you guys could like, maybe try to incorporate these other landowners?
Yeah.
Okay, well then are they going to get a project driver? Because I, I, I mean, how is it? I just want it to be fair, and I feel like this is a massive, massive amount of money for specials. So do you know what I'm saying? It just, it doesn't seem legit to go all the way up there when there was an oper, in my mind, there should have been an opportunity right here.
But there's not.
But there's not anymore.
Because of the timing.
And this was discussed with the developer too, that, okay, there might be an opportunity to go down Wall Avenue, when all said and done, there wasn't an opportunity to go to Wall Avenue. So that's why the petition is for up to 76th and across. Now, the cost, I don't disagree. The cost has gone up significantly. It's just the way that it, the way that it is. But Wall Avenue was getting, is getting, just got new pavement put on it. And where it was getting paved at the time, there is not anywhere to squeeze another utility through that corridor.
And I remember, I remember that conversation. But would we have been able to add them to this lift station if we would have had a larger pipe? Would we have been able to add them to the lift station if we had maybe had a larger lift station that was?
So hindsight's always 2020. I mean, at the time, I think getting Lost River service was the big thing. So as far as looking out to the what ifs, I mean, we, we worked on it over in 2016 to put that lift station in. We did all that. So I, I don't even know if that, that land was on, was even being thought about at that point. Maybe, I don't know. But it's, we have to work with the constraints that we have. So we'll flush it out through public comment. We'll take that, we'll address all of the comments that you guys have. We'll address comments that the developer has, we'll address comments that the adjacent landlords have. And then we'll bring it back to you before we approve any of this and move forward with it. And when you go, so you talk about the project driver. We did not assign a project driver on this one for the preliminary special assessments. But number one, special assessment commission gives a little latitude.
Yeah.
As to how much the project driver can be assigned.
I trust that committee.
And number two, the guidance has been that those who petition for the project for surely get the driver. So if it gets outside of the petitioning bodies, then we have to have a more of a discussion.
And this is just for discussion this evening?
Yeah.
There's going to be more coming?
I know, but I feel like I just, like, I'm really hoping that when we have our workshops regarding overall infrastructure needs and capacity limits and I, I just, I don't work with this stuff every day like you do. So I am struggling to understand, because to me, it feels like we're piecemealing some of it, and I don't like that feeling. And I, I feel like, yes, hindsight is 2020, but if we could absolutely maybe like, go over it a little bit more in depth and like implications of when, when you're going to approve this, you know, this is going to trigger this and it's going to trigger this. Like knowing the implications because I am maybe just not understanding at those times.
So at the time, Lost River, Lost River first was the second subdivision that was done with compact residential or R5. You know, a little higher density zoning. RV was the first one, and then Lost River was the second one. I think there was some apprehension at that time, how long it would take to build that out. And I think it exceeded our expectations as to how quickly it was going to be built out, and maybe even exceeded the notice. I can't talk for that. But when you figure that that addition was constructed in 2017, and here we are, not even six years later, and we're 99% complete with the first one, that's kind of crazy. We had maybe, I forget how many houses put on there as we were building up the infrastructure. It was going to be this many houses, this many houses, this many houses, this many houses. Because there are constraints with the lifting. You can only retain the sewage for so long. You have to be able to pump it. There's retention times. There's quality of sewage, which we'll get into when it comes to the time for the infrastructure portion of it. But I think there was an apprehension as to how much, how big can we make this stuff? Well, there's been six years of development going on, and you can see what the population's on, you can see what, what things are. You kind of alluded to your questions too. Is it sustainable or whatever? You know, are we going to run out of capacity?
Yeah, I mean, those are my questions.
Are we going to build out? Yeah. So.
I mean, I, I think they're fair questions.
Had it transcribed, so I could answer every one of them.
Right.
So I don't disagree with you.
And, and feel free to call me too as your, your discussion develops with Jim. Because I do work with this pretty frequently. I am prepared to answer a lot of what he's got there as well and justify some of the decisions that were made, why they were made, when they were made, and the timing of such, which plays a really key factor in the concerns that you have.
So something I do want to point out too is being this is a regional, this would be a regional project. I'd be up to council and decide if they would do a cost share. We typically target that 25% cost share for regional projects. That would be, that'd be a consideration that's typically not reflected within, from the engineer report from Jim. But I just want to make sure you're aware of that, so.
We're well aware of that. Thanks, Brenton. Any other comments?
Well, I don't know if it's appropriate if I comment, but I guess we're not taking action. But I do think that, I think Jack is wanting to be creative and find solutions that are going to work for everybody. And I do think he has sort of been in the trenches of working on this in the last couple of days and is eager to share with city staff and engineer some possibilities that he and some people he's working with are, are looking at. Because like $3.75 million for the Force Main would make the project really tough. So yeah, I just think it's, I'm glad no action's being taken because I think obviously there needs to maybe at least explore a couple of other options maybe. He's obviously aware of all the same challenges that we're all aware of, but.
Sure. Well, we appreciate the forthright opportunity to bring this to us so that we can have these discussions before it gets brought to us for action. I think this is a step in the right direction. And it sounds like we have some questions and some different things we need to work through, so.
No, Jim, I do appreciate.
Yeah.
Getting the information.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to come across as like just angry this afternoon, but.
No, no.
I just.
There's a lot to this.
There's a lot going on.
Yep.
And, you know, the city's growing very fast. And so I just, I have a lot of concerns about cost and infrastructure needs and just overall. So thank you for taking my comments, Jim. And I'm looking forward to hearing some of your, some of that information.
Awesome. No other comments? We'll move on to item 13, the city council workshop, number one date selection.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are a few, several weeks ago, it's been a little bit of a while now. City staff was directed by the city council to host a series of workshops regarding a variety of topics, which are going to include planning, development, infrastructure, and finance throughout the city. For the past couple of months, city staff's been meeting internally to discuss how these workshops should be conducted and what order they should be presented. Following the discussion, my department drew the short straw and will be the first workshop on the docket. And really what we're going to kind of highlight is surrounding community development, which is mainly going to look at challenges in prom areas within the city regarding current development patterns, specialty districts or small area plans, and the city's comprehensive plan. On Tuesday, October 29th, I sent out a due to poll to the city council and applicable staff. We did not get a consensus during that round. I sent out another one October 31st, 2024. We kind of let the cards fall where they fell and it looks like December 12th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, was the unanimous selection. There is, I believe, Mayor Trudeau was if need be. But that was the only date out of all the dates that I sent that I had the most green check marks, and that was my only yellow one. So what I am asking for tonight is a confirmation of that date. And then location should be here. We're working on scheduling this room, but we'll work on finalizing location. But at least if we can get a date and time scheduled out there in the atmosphere, that would be great.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to this. Thank you guys for your hard work on that. Did we have to make a motion, Jace, then to?
Yeah, just, we'll just confirm December 12th.
Since everybody took the poll, I think it's appropriate to just approve it. Yeah?
I don't think you have to do a motion on it. Just looking for a consensus discussion. We just wanted to make sure we have as many, as much of the council available as possible to have a conversation of it. And if, you know, if staff has conflicts here or there, I know, I just realized I have a conflict on 12th, but it doesn't mean you guys can't have the workshop and do that because the first topic will be community development or planning. So Jace will be able.
Yeah. I, I, I think that just a general topic on here is fine. I think that all planning can be handled outside of council moving forward. But I appreciate the attention to getting something on the calendar. At this time, I think the 12th, 6 to 8 is acceptable. Unless I hear otherwise.
That works for me.
I didn't understand what you meant when you said all planning moving forward.
Well, there should be no reason that we can't coordinate times and stuff. He doesn't need our approval.
It doesn't need to be an agenda.
It doesn't need to be an agenda item.
Okay.
It was basically, we were having difficulty trying to get something lined up.
No, we're fine.
We had to go farther out in order to be able to get this to work out.
Yeah. We need to, keep, continue to streamline meetings, so we appreciate it. And go ahead and jot us down for the 12th, 6 to 8, Jace.
Yep.
Thank you, Jace.
I'll be there, Jace.
Item 14, Water Sewer Storm Street Improvement District 2023-1, Southdale Farms, sixth addition. Jim, design reimbursement number one.
Yes, council. The, the project was designed by a developer's engineer, not city forest. Developer write invoices for engineering work and likely reimbursed through the special assessment district. And the past invoices for design, engineering, and plant preparation have been eligible for reimbursement through the improvement district. Plating feasibility and plating services have not been reimbursable. Developer has marked up the attached invoices, if you had seen, that they felt were eligible for reimbursement. I reviewed those and after review, was recommending a $67,380 reimbursement to HS Development through the Southdale Farms sixth project.
Brenton, we discussed some questions on this earlier today. Did you have an opportunity to get those answered?
The only one I had concerns on was just understanding what the data concern or data requests were towards the end. But other than that, I wasn't real concerned with them. There was just the one, I think it was second to last one and the third to last. It just says data request, it doesn't say what. But I'm assuming that was tied to folks asking for information during the bid process. Is that, is that a fair assumption probably?
I would say so.
Okay. Because I know they did have request or ask, they were asked questions when it was up for bid. Why is that big questions here? That was only when I was questioning.
Less than $1,000 of the total?
I'm not real concerned about it.
Still, I want to make sure that we've addressed it and that we know what that is.
Yeah.
Can we identify that tonight or do we need to push this?
I can't. So if you want to table it and I can reach out tomorrow, I certainly can.
I want to make sure that.
What we could do is you could have, you could take action on pending data requests and then we'd come back with just that portion later or come back.
What's your concern?
Yeah, what's the concern?
There's, this is reimbursable design costs. As you know, I'm not a fan of this. And so we go through these invoices pretty extensively because it's my goal to eventually eliminate. And so we go through these invoices pretty extensively, because it's my goal to eventually eliminate reimbursing design to outside firms.
Right.
Um, but for the time being, because we still have this in play, um, there's a number of things that we question on design reimbursement. So on here, there's a, uh, data request that I, I don't know what it is. It's not delineated for, you know, two hundred and forty dollars. And then you scroll up here, and there's some miscellaneous questions, and there's additional data requests for eighty dollars, eighty dollars, three twenty. And it just, it adds up over and over and over again. And I wanna know what those requests are, and if they're really related to design or if it's just passing documentation back and forth. Um, as you know, we, um, discounted the last design request due to some plating reimbursements. I also don't allow plating. That's a city standard. And so we go through these with a fine tooth comb, just to make sure the dollars are spent. I have no problem approving this, uh, pending the resolution to some of the detail requested on the data requests. If others don't disagree with that.
I trust your call on that, Sarah. Yeah, that sounds good. And so we're gonna come through it and.
I'll look for a motion to approve design reimbursement number one pending resolution of the detail on the data request.
Are you making a motion?
I can make a motion. Looking for a second.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I thought you said it so well. Take it.
All right. Item fifteen, engineering and public works report. Miss Dordalman.
You should have gotten a whole bunch of summary sheets and you pack it.
Tonn of them.
Let you go through those at your leisure. We won't, we'll hit on the high points, so you betcha, it is pretty much open. The only thing remaining is the streetlights, as far as lighting, and though that will be done in February or March. There was something, even polls like standard, it seems like electrical's behind on that. So, um, the only thing that remains on that, they've actually got more done this year than we had originally planned, because they were able to get the soil, uh, the turf, uh, height seeded and mulch. And, um, the plantings remain next year, they have to put the trees in, but, um, we held the plantings until next year on purpose, just because it seems like whenever we plant them in November, they usually have a hard winter, it gets stressed, and then we come and bring it back. So, um, we've been trying to emphasize some of that planting in the following year in the spring, so it's got to summer to actually maybe get a little bit established on that. So, um, sixty-third street, there's a couple punchless items remaining on that one. That's all, all, that will all be done. It's up and operational. Sixty-sixth, there's some lingering punchless items on that one. There's a water main, there's some stuff that has to be taken care of for Casper water users. Um, sixty-fourth avenue, or sixty-fifth is complete. We saw the substantial completion in the, uh, consent agenda. And then sixty-fourth, the, uh, last bit of concrete will be down, I believe, the first part of this week. They're finishing up the shared use path on sixty-second street between Deer Creek and sixty-fourth earlier today. There's probably some, still some tie-ins there, and there's some stuff, as you saw earlier, in your consent, that, uh, some drainage work on the east side of sixty-fourth with some flat roads that the company had done. So we had originally planned on putting doing that as a kind of a field adjustment, but it turned out it took a little bit more than what we had anticipated.
Change order forthcoming?
That was one of the consent.
I saw that, um, and it was quite a bit higher.
Yeah, and it's got to do with the hand pour versus machine pour. And it's, it's drainage around that east side of the roundabout. So when the county constructed the shoulders, they were flat, and then they tapered them off, so we had to take more, out more than what we had originally anticipated taking out. We figured we could do, like I said, do it with some field adjustments, and it involved a little bit more and some more handwork. So that was, um, not ideal, but I think we came to a pretty good resolution on, on that one. Deer Creek Estates, they undergrounded, then the sewers all done. They started water last week on that one. Um, they have a couple more weeks to get the underground done. That one is not going to be paved this year. It wasn't ever planned to be. It was a carryover. Get the underground in this year, let it sit, let the, uh, let the soil go through a freeze thaw. And place the roads on top of it, on top of it next year. Um, Rivers Edge, uh, a lot of little miscellaneous things going on. Tried to do a lifting station startup today, but they didn't have the right, uh, folks for the things of tomorrow. They're going to do that. And there's just a lot of little, little things to be done out there. Streetlights, signing, cops over backfilling, cutting in some ditches and that type of work. So, uh, that one wasn't supposed to be completed this time. That's been extended through, through change orders. So, um, there's still work to be done in Rivers Edge, uh, first as well. Both of the walls are at the final punchless stage. Still trying to get, they were gonna put those beacons up. They got the bases in, they put the concrete around the bases at the frontage road. So it's just been a matter of getting them to, to put them up, so.
They have them?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I keep getting told they do, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
We need to confirm, 'cause I questioned if they've actually received them yet.
Right, so.
But they've done, they've put the.
The base in.
The bases in.
The bases, they, so they took, cut out the concrete, put the electrical wires into it, put the base in. The bases are sitting there covered up now. They, so they had to take out a little concrete to put up, they had to take out a square section to put a round hole in. Now they went, today they went and finished, finished that up.
Okay.
Up around it, so.
Can you find out when they'll get that?
I, I, I asked under a month of, of weekly meetings.
I would love to see them up.
I know. So, I will, um, push a little harder on that tomorrow morning for you. And then, um, just getting through this final push to, to tell it freeze off. It looks like there may be some forecasted snow in two weeks, so.
Okay.
Get where we can with that, so. In essence of time, any questions on that?
No.
Nope.
I got a question, Jim.
Certainly.
Um, it's, it's not so much our stuff, uh, just curious. Um, right now, if, if people are putting in the, um, hydroseed, uh, let's say just a few days ago, a couple days ago, I'm talking about the county projects.
Tell, tell Jeff it's coming up in my topic.
What was that, Jeff?
I didn't hear what Sarah said.
Oh, she said it's coming up in her, in her portfolio. She's given a precursor, so maybe we can kill two birds with one stone here.
I just wonder if it's gonna take.
It's not.
No, it won't.
Anything after October fifteenth will take, and I have it as a note in my section.
Yep, but the contractors, the contractors do it because it's, uh, effort in the stabilization of the, of the soils. So, um, yes, it more than likely will not take. It will be dormant, and hopefully it takes in the spring. So, we did have some stuff take on Colorado seventeen for shared use path. We did have some take, um, for, by where the free park improvements were done. So, um, I just think we're beyond that without lows in the thirties right now.
Yeah. We're, we're about a month past anything really taking under normal conditions.
Right.
And it's a, 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 it's a really sore subject for me when I see people hydroseeding after the fifteenth of October, because there's no chance with the, the temperatures of the soil for that to take. And everyone says, oh, it'll just go dormant, it'll come back in the spring, if the birds don't all eat it. So, uh, that's, that's a big if, so I don't like giving credit for any hydroseeding after October fifteenth.
Are we gonna make them do it again?
If it doesn't grow? I mean, there's this, there's a, there's a, the supply specification, they have to have seventy percent growth. So it's, it's up to them to water it, maintain it, and establish it. And sometimes the contractors just take the, they'll roll the dice that it's going to lie dormant, and hopefully the birds don't eat it. But it's.
And here's my problem with that, Jim.
Yep.
The, the county projects, we are not in charge of.
Correct.
Right.
And the county is going to turn those roads over to us, and we are not gonna have really a say in it, I don't think.
Gotcha.
Unless we do have a say, uh, where we can say, no, 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 do it right.
I will relay your concerns tomorrow.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just so we have it, that we commented on it.
Yeah, the, the county did it two days ago, uh, and then it rained, so.
Jeff drove on the same road I did, 'cause I saw the same thing and went, what the sand hell are they doing?
Yep, so, all right, I'll shut up now.
City administrator.
Hey, a couple items I have. Just a reminder, tomorrow, voting day. Uh, four senior senators, seven A M. and seven P M. Hope you go vote here locally. I believe you go anywhere in the county, but we have a location here in town, so. Um, the meeting space outfit starts this week. Uh, so Christian Company is starting that, and we should have the ball moving here soon. Uh, they say roughly, as of right now, they say in about ninety-day build. Could be sooner, could be later, it just depends on if they get everything, how smoothly it goes for them, so. Uh, but they do have the billing permit, and they are good to go, so they should be starting here. I believe it's, they may have been out there today. I didn't drive by there to see, but, uh, they should be getting that moving forward now. Um, and the last one I had, you know, he asked me about Almond's drainage. City staff, yes, it was city staff, prepping for winter. So, because there are some areas that like rehab cattails and stuff, they're mowing that down, clearing that out, and then clearing out just a few small areas for drainage.
I have been in contact with the residents out there too. You get email, so.
Okay.
But it was just, my understanding is more prep for the winter.
I mean, I got the email from the resident saying thank you, and then I was like, oh, I didn't know that the staff was going out there, um, so.
Yep.
But it was nice to get thank you.
So, yep, that's all I have, so.
Okay.
Okay. Well, Jeff stole my thunder. Thanks, Jeff.
I didn't mean to, I just, I was curious, uh, that, I didn't understand why somebody would possibly have the desire to do that.
Right.
This late, they came right before they knew there was gonna be rain.
Right. I, I wanted to see if you had anything, any other additions for your portfolio report?
I do. Uh, so last week, um, we did have a city leaders meeting up at, uh, the Black Building up in downtown Fargo. Um, there is a lot of differing perspectives on what we should be asking the legislature for in terms of funding. Um, we, we actually aligned with the Fargo Airport Authority, um, and, uh, we also align with uh, some of the requests for correctional facilities, um, needing additional funding. Uh, I know there was a news story last week that came out talking about the lack of space in not only Cass County Jail, but almost every single jail in the state, uh, including the state pen. The state pen does not have any open availability, uh, and they're asking the local county jails to pay on to um, all of the people that would normally be going to the state pen, unless it is, especially in his crimes. So, uh, with that, um, the long and the short of that meeting was what topics would they like us to bring up uh, at the state legislature, or ideas for funding. Uh, a lot of it's obviously is gonna be impacted by the vote tomorrow. Uh, however that turns out, uh, we'll wait and see. But, um, as Brenton said, a reminder, please get out and vote, uh, and other than that, uh, they're gonna have a follow-up meeting. They're gonna be sending out some questionnaires, so I probably will be, uh, asking the rest of the city council. Uh, their ideas, just to make sure I don't miss anything. And with that, uh, I'm done with my update.
Awesome. Thanks, Jeff. Safe travels to you.
Thank you. It's been a great day already, I promise you.
Right. I, I have, uh, in my portfolio report, I have some interesting feedback for you on that exact topic. It's called parenting so that our jails don't become overflowing. Please, vote tomorrow, everyone. Okay, long story. Um, talking about projects wrapping up, I know that we're getting to that part of the season where conditions change, Jim. I know that we accepted a date change, obviously, for the Sixth Fourth Avenue project to November sixteenth. We're gonna be pushing it pretty hard to get that. I don't wanna see any additional date changes, so please keep an eye on that. Are you anticipating any?
We haven't got anything back from, we'll be pushing on that, knowing, getting it done.
We're, we're gonna get very lucky if they're able to work right up until that date. I don't know if it's gonna happen.
I agree.
Okay. All right, that's the only two concerns that I had. Otherwise, I did get out to all the projects, and I did get my updates done. So, I'll move that right over to council member Berkland.
Um, I don't know. I've had some meetings up at the city hall, met with some developers regarding some things that they wanna bring to town. Um, have a meeting with Jace coming up on, what did we decide, Friday?
Yep.
Um, to kinda touch base and go over anything new that I'm unaware of. Um, what else was I going to say?
Vote.
You had a study review committee recap with.
What's that?
You had a study review committee recap last Friday.
Oh, yes, I did. I had a, I had a downtown study review, um, just a recap with, um, that group, just, I, I was unable to make it to, um, the actual meeting, just because I had, Darren was working out of town, and, you know, being a, being a mom and a work, working bee, it's hard to get there. So, um, it was very good, and I'm excited to have council updates um, with that. That was the one where we had some, um, I think Ron was there and Rachel Lee, uh, residents of town, and, um, yeah, I think it went very well. Did you enjoy your time at that meeting, Ron?
Yeah, it was pretty informative.
Yeah.
Distribution of the numbers from, uh, from the surveys.
Yeah, so they talked a lot about the survey, um, survey results and, um, you know, Tanya kinda went over some things with me on a map and kinda showed me some ideas. It was good, it was really good. So, I'm looking forward to you guys getting an update on that.
Glad to hear it. Rachel.
Okay, the Halloween event was awesome. I don't know how many people were there, Brent. How many people do you think? How many kids? Three hundred kids?
Uh, Paul and I were thinking, total amount of people is probably around, you know, five, six hundred, maybe.
I mean, it was just a ton of people.
It was a good turnout.
Good turnout, and it was the first time we've used the middle school, so I think we maybe, I mean, down to like making sure there's an outlet near, you know, we kind of, I think have worked out the kinks now, and I'm excited to do it there again next year, knowing what we know about the facility. I think kids had a great time, um, just for kicks, got to have their dance show as well. Um, and then at the park board meeting last week, um, a couple highlights. Chelsea Johnson, she proposed, uh, shared use of the alleyway for their downtown concept. They have a, a concept that they were pitching, that they could kind of share some parking, where they would use parking during the, the workday, but then weekends and evenings, they could share some parking with the parks, so they're just kind of in the, um, in the concept conversation time. And Suncrest first came with a proposed plat. Um, and it, I think it was changed after they spoke to residents, but it, it ended up taking, um, and giving a wide swath of green space for the park board, which the park board didn't like, 'cause it's quite a bit of green space without having any sort of function. I guess they discussed maybe like workout things, but there wasn't a chunk that they could use. And so tonight, before the city council meeting, um, Enclave came back with two ideas for a chunk. Basically, that strip on the north side, uh, either the north part of it, right across the street from Freed, or the south part of that little.
Lion's strip.
Huh? Oh, lions, yeah, yeah, lions. Yes, and, and, uh, Park Board chose the nor, most northern section to have some connectivity with Lions Park. And, um, so they went through with that, and I think the rush was so that Enclave can go to planning a zoning and then to us with a plan that Park Board has agreed to.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, congratulations on the Halloween event, and please keep us posted, um, on how things develop. But it sounds like there's some progress being made there. Um, I didn't have anything else, uh, with that.
Oh, did we skip over you?
Oh, no.
No.
We didn't. You did yours.
You're good. So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, please. I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, everyone have a great week. Look forward to seeing you back in two weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Good night, guys.
Thanks, Jeff.
Bye, Ron.
See you, Ron.
Bye.
I promise I won't stay and keep you guys.
No.